Everyone.
Call the board of supervisors in the session for our four forty-five work session, discuss possible action HR director.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is the auditor. On Friday, we conducted an interview with all three supervisors present. For candidate ten, the purpose of this. Agenda item work session today is for the supervisors to now deliberate and discuss their thoughts on kind candidate ten. And any potential action that we should be taking in regards to candidate ten or any other course of action. So I turn it over to the three of you, and we're happy to answer any questions that may come up.
Thank you, Kevin. You can start while somebody else wants to.
Did anyone get consensus from the room? We had several participants, and then my other questions are logistics. I don't know if we've done reference checks. I also don't know. How we're going to go forward if we choose to make an offer. I'd like to see again Gary McAndrew help us carry that water, so maybe we can do this. If we're, if we have, this is a consensus candidate, so we can move quickly.
So we did have consensus among elected officials who are not the supervisors and then other department heads who were present in the room on candidate ten. That, that we are all comfortable and would be excited to move forward with candidate ten. A discussion had been made as far as the offer and following the parameters that were within the job description and the job posting. Allowing either the budget director or myself to craft that offer letter, and we can do so with Gary McAndrew's input if we need to. Otherwise, offer letters are something that we've all written. We have a standard county one that we generally tend to use. And then references. Sorry, go ahead.
I saw the letter that was in the attachment.
Gary McAndrew also, as I had reached out to the candidate and they provided me. Some additional references. Gary followed up on those and they were all satisfactory. I spoke with him earlier today. I believe that he has a conflict due to another event.
I did speak with him as well this afternoon, and his consensus on candidate ten is this is the same as the people who are in that room.
What I expect as we may be entering into some negotiation for wages, for benefits. So I don't know. I mean, we've gone from June until now. So thankful we have a candidate. But I would like to, if this is our person, let's go get them. If you know what I'm saying, right? Let's get this done.
Yeah, I think that starts with an offer, so hopefully we can iron that out today. So I would concur, it seems like after the meeting. The, so as a pot off, and I listened. And the other attendees in the room fortunately were disconnected or shut off at the point on the phone, all expressed confidence in the candidate. And I thought it was a good interview, so I'm ready to move forward with the details of an offer, and I think it's probably wage and then. Benefits related to vacation, probably the two big.
And I mean, the two variables. The two big variables are always wage and then available vacation. Most departments have had the latitude to negotiate anywhere up to four weeks. You know, I think it's typically a best practice to determine what their current vacation is, and then you could. Go slightly less than that or match it, you know, depending on your comfort level as far as making a strong offer out of the gate.
I, I thought the interview was very good. I'm very comfortable with. The applicant, I'd be in favor of, you know, moving forward with the job offer. And we can work out the logistics. There's a thirty day. Window that where you have to deal with too, so.
Yeah, candidate ten did indicate that they would need to provide thirty days notice to their current employer. When you start to do the math on that with the holidays, you're probably looking, the Monday after Thanksgiving would be a probably a good negotiating point for first level.
Would it help the board if we had confirmation on the salary range? I did ask the, the budget director for that this afternoon.
I believe the salary range was listed as. Five.
I have it, but I would, we'll hear directly from Stella.
So as published, when the job application went out the first time, the salary range was eighty-six thousand. Four dollars and twenty cents to a hundred and five thousand, five ninety and sixty cents. That's what we published when we went out the second time. We did not publish a salary range.
Would that be one where we could do the steps also?
I'm sure I would say that any salary range, this is probably has five percent steps built in between. So that's our standard scale has five percent in between each step.
You. For me, I think with this candidate with twenty years of experience and this being. A challenging role for the county and very competitive as far as in the marketplace, I'd probably start at the higher range. And I was, I've got highlighted, and I'm not sure exactly why, but three weeks of vacation, I think the max is four. Our current policy probably needs a little revision. From my vantage point, but that's, that's where I'm at.
And, and the county has negotiated higher than four and very limited circumstances, just as an FYI.
No, I'd be fine with that. I'd say, what's, what is it, a five-step process up to the one of?
It looks like it doesn't exactly equal five percent in between. So I would say right around. Eighty-six, ninety-ish, ninety-five, one hundred, one oh five would be kind of the, the steps.
Eighty-six, ninety-five.
Eighty-six, I'm rounding, ninety, ninety-five. One hundred thousand and one oh five.
Does anyone know what the candidate currently makes? I wondered if anyone knew what candidate would currently make. We, we do, so we're going into this a little bit blind. And I guess I would like to make sure that we get this candidate. So how might we negotiate this? A little more quickly than coming back. We're not meeting next week, so I mean, we've.
Doing that right now, if we make an offer, if the board can agree on the salary and the vacation, I think we can get an offer out.
Yeah, if Supervisor Wickham had suggested on the higher end of the scale, if we started stage, if we start step four, which is. Give or take right around one hundred thousand dollars a year and start negotiating with three weeks vacation. If the board is prepared to go up to four weeks vacation and step five at one oh five, then that gives us some negotiating room.
I'm fine with those numbers.
I would go at step three and the three weeks vacation, see where we land, we can always go up. You know, I just think it's fair. She's got twenty years experience. I mean, we don't want to lose her, but I think that's a fair offer to start.
I mean, there's nothing ruling out the phone call being made to request current salary history if she wants to provide that. In some cases, she doesn't have to provide that.
Having trouble hearing you, Kevin.
She doesn't need to provide salary history if we ask it.
I understand that. I understand. I, I'm with Supervisor Wickham. I'd like to make this happen, and so I think we need to go in with a step four offer.
I'm comfortable with that.
If that's, if that's the consensus here, we can put together our offer letter. We have a framework that we've used for other director level positions. And myself or Ed or Stella will reach out with that offer to the candidate and. You know, put our best foot forward and get this deal closed. She seems. The candidate seems as somebody who is very interested and very excited to be working for Dubuque County. I think this is going to be a good fit, and I don't see any issues here at all with our strong offers.
Well, you could run with the November twenty-eighth then for a start date.
Yeah, is that the, is that the Monday after?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would default to whatever would work best for your schedule as well.
That would be a, that would give you the time.
I'm with that.
Right, I mean, would, you have to adjust it, that's fine, but just for the.
Certainly, we would take sooner, but no later than November twenty-eighth, probably.
The question from the candidate will likely be about. The holidays. And are we prepared to, what's our typical holiday policy?
It's a six months of probation. It's six months of probation. You are not paid holidays. That is at the discretion, the board can, can make any decision they want to, is that starting after Thanksgiving would remove Thanksgiving from the equation and only affect Christmas, Christmas Eve, New Year's and New Year's Eve.
But you don't have to come to work.
Right.
I would include the holidays as paid.
We could also use that as a, as a.
I'm comfortable with that. Is that a day, day and a half? What are we, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Four days.
Four days, wow.
So in December, there would be four holidays with.
In December.
New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. So there are, they tend to bunch up right there at the end of the year.
I'm comfortable with that.
That's fine.
As someone who fell into the legacy policy with the holidays and spent Saturdays and Sundays working here, because otherwise I would not have gotten paid. I would encourage the board to front load those and just. It's a professional to have to work six months to get a paid off on just my two cents.
I've never heard of before, so.
There were many of us that fell under the legacy policy, and I would hope that this could be revisited. Under the new HR administrator to perhaps update this for new hires, so just my two cents.
Just for clarity, are we discussing the four holidays in December and including January first, and then also. January sixteenth, which is Martin Luther King Day, which is also a paid holiday.
Yes, I am.
Are we talking about waiving the six-month period then for this candidate?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All other standard benefits as they apply, related to our medical and dental.
Again. Yes. Yeah, consensus in step four up to step five, starting at three weeks with room to negotiate to four.
So who will convey the offer?
I am happy to do that on behalf of the county and other, all the elected officials.
And when would we expect to hear back?
I don't know how to answer that question.
I would say at least, I think a professional courtesy would be at least a week.
Yeah.
Pending the offer, I mean, we're not meeting, so we could push it to November. I, I don't like the offers, like, you know, you have twenty-four hours, I think.
Oh, yeah, I don't think I would.
I don't think.
Deadline on when she has to respond to us.
I, I understand. The candidate has been an applicant since June. Since late June, I think so. I would hope that. The candidate's prepared to make a decision. I also don't think twenty-four hours is, I think that's incredibly rude. You know, but I do, I'm not interested in it being two weeks, honestly, because our time is running as well.
I, I imagine if we put an offer out there that we'd be hearing something in twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
I think so, and.
If you anticipate making that, if you can get the letter drafted up this week.
That offer will go out this.
I would say November, no later than November fourth. That board.
It's going to put you to thirty days to looking at December fourth and so.
You could do the end of this week as well, whatever.
I would be delighted to have this candidate accept an offer and be here anytime in December.
Right, right. I'm just reminded we had talked about November twenty-eighth, so.
We'll have an offer out this week, to be clear, early this week. So with any, with any luck, we have.
First then, you want, Matt, we just need a date. I think it is appropriate to have that the offer is extended. You need to accept this offer by this date. So do we have a date?
I'll go seven days from the date of the offer letter.
Thank you.
And then she can advise us what her start date would be.
I'm good with that as well.
Sounds like we have a framework. Are there any other questions?
Nothing.
Thanks for leaving it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work, staff.
It's been a whole team effort, so.
Yes, said staff. Did a great job.
I agree. We don't have this candidate yet, so let's. Do what we need to do to make it happen.
It happens. Here we go to our five o'clock work session discussing on closing the ERP application process. We're down to roughly five hundred thousand in ERP funds, Stella.
Put it in the microphone. I don't know why in the room tonight, everybody is muted.
I believe the last time I looked, it was around six hundred and eleven thousand, but I will pull up that spreadsheet right now to verify.
How many pending applications do we have?
One that I'm aware of.
Two, I believe.
Thank you very much.
There are two pending applications?
Maybe I can.
Yeah, and are there? Number of pending applications?
City of Asbury had. Provided that, and I sent that out to you. There are two other organizations that have. Requested, and I have sent to them the application, but I have not heard back from them. One is. Quite a, over a month old or, or more, and the other one is more recent, so there are. Two out there that I haven't heard back from them. They have not, they have not gotten back to me, so.
Okay.
So officially, it'd be one, City of Asbury.
But we also have the HVAC. System replacement issue, which is between three and four million. I'm assuming we could use that six hundred thousand towards that if we wanted to, Stella?
Uh, yes, we could. If that would be a qualifying project.
Do we have anything, do we have anything back on that? We were waiting for them to get us some information.
We are working on the next step, which is the. Calculations and what we, the actual equipment that would be required for this that will help generate that quote. So that is currently in the process. The estimates for everybody involved and all the people who know do put the price tag between three and four million dollars fairly solidly. But we'll be able to get that down to an exact number right around as we get closer to budget time for presentation.
My personal feeling is we should use some of the ERP funds to. Assist with replacement of this. It is for, obviously, the public's. Benefit, you know. Going to have to come up with the money somewhere.
Uh, yes, we will have to fund that and probably other options, other items as we move forward. I would like to hear City of Asbury, and I think. We've been consistent in allowing late applicants, and if we have funds available, I would like to hear their request. And then have the board deliberate at that point. I'm not interested necessarily in expending past our American Rescue Funds allocation. But I do want to hear the City of Asbury, since they put their application in.
What do we, are we closing the application process? And considering Asbury in before this new deadline? Is that where we are?
That's what Jay is recommending, yes.
Well, no, I don't, you didn't hear him say that.
But you wanted to hear Asbury's.
I definitely want to hear Asbury's.
We're not going to accept anymore from this point forward is.
I didn't say that, so I would.
I'm saying.
Okay, yes, so I think when the funds are done, this program is over, or when the board decides the program is done. That's my, my two cents.
Okay, so do you want to accept more applications, Jim?
Uh, the application process is still by practice open. I'm not encouraging people to apply, no, and we're down to our last six hundred thousand and. Most applicants can read the room, but I think in fairness, we should probably hear the City of Asbury. We've heard many of the other municipal candidates and their applicants, along with other nonprofits that were past the deadline. And we still have funds available, not a lot. Uh, but once the funds are exhausted, then I believe the program is over.
I think part of the question we had from some other staff members and other elected officials is. We're being approached. I've been approached recently in the last couple of days about, is the application process still open for people who want to apply for funding? That would fit in what we have left. So I guess part of the deliberation today will help guide us when we tell people my standard line is typically to reach out to one of the supervisors. But I'd also don't want to mislead or give people the idea that they're going to have a chance if it is in fact closed. That would probably be, one way or the other, some good information for everybody to know.
I have no issue with hearing Asbury's proposal. I'm saying any funds left, we should probably be keeping for. Or HVAC, but. That's my personal opinion. We're going to have to pay for it one way or the other, so we might as well use some of those funds for our benefit also.
Yeah.
What's the question?
Pardon?
What's the question?
You want to hear Asbury's proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to accept more applications, or do we want to save the remainder of the funding, whatever? If we give Asbury some, or if we don't give Asbury some, keep the remainder of the funding and put it towards the HVAC upgrade.
I, I am not interested in, in at this point saying it's going toward HVAC. I deal with the same set of circumstances everyone does. People ask me. Is it closed? Asbury asked me at Bonds, the city administrator, is it closed? I said, no, it is not closed. That being said. It's been open for more than a year. So I don't know what to tell people either, but I'm not interested in telling everyone right now that we're keeping. Any sum remainder toward HVAC. We don't know the numbers. That's a budgetable discussion that I think we have to have. As capital projects, very high numbers, we have to figure that out as part of the budget process, so. You know, we're here at this time, and we've spent a lot of money. With an open-ended process, and I don't know that probably the three of us would not all go back and do it the same way again. I think it's benefited lots of folks. So if there's someone who wants to put a closure after Asbury, I need to hear that. I do not hear Supervisor Wickham saying that. And knowing who else has talked to me, I'm not sure that I'm there either. I mean, some of these are interesting things coming forward that could use assistance if there's money left. And I don't feel empowered to say it's over or it's done if they're turning around and they've talked to either of you within the last two days or some other, we have a lot of messengers now.
Okay.
Yeah.
You don't want to use.
Just to be clear, is when my, my vantage point is when the funds are exhausted, the program that will be open, and I would be happy to state that when that occurs. So I don't plan to go deeper than the funds have been allocated, so whatever our balance is, is that.
There is also nothing that says we have to allocate those funds this year or even next year, so there is time as well, which may benefit. Having a closure to the applications and keeping a tiny little nut in the event that something comes up in the next couple of years, or some real good project comes up, or. And, and a need is identified for the county that could be offset with that as well, so just to offer that.
The Asbury application is for over seven hundred thousand dollars. Share in a multimillion dollar project that they're doing currently. I guess we are doing currently. I live there, my hometown, I live there, so.
Okay, my concern was trying to keep some back to help with the HVAC, but obviously. I like, don't want to do that, so I guess we'll leave it open then.
Each, the HVAC is going to be a big bite.
That's why I thought this would help soften that blow. We don't have the solid numbers in, but they were pretty sure in the three to four million range, so. We have left is just a, a small fraction of it.
Right, but we, that, it was an unknown before the last awards that we've made too, so I think in fairness, let's listen to Asbury and.
Oh, we're all in agreement with listening to Asbury.
Right.
So just to, just for my clarity, am I to instruct people to continue to call the supervisors and submit applications? I still don't have an answer for that one.
I think it's interesting, actually, because you learn a lot about what's going on. I mean, I don't turn those calls away. I do think that if, I mean, that, then the news story is that. There's about a half a million dollars left, and the current request that's pending is for seven hundred thousand dollars more than the remaining balance.
Very few projects that we fully, you know. Fully funded.
Right, yeah. You, you know, for, for clarity, I mean, I, I think we have good consensus that we want to hear Asbury in their application. And I made the comment that, you know, once the funds are exhausted, then for sure the program's done, and I also made the comment if the board wants to close it sooner. I'm open to that. So if you wanted to, I think for the community, I think it would be fair and proper. Be fine if we today said this was our last application. I would have no problem with that, nor do I believe the community would either.
It's been open a long time. We're going to have some funds remaining. We got.
No secret.
Two years.
I think there's a recent emergency application for the rescue mission that's out there. That would be to get an overflow warming center. So I don't know if that's one of the ones that we've heard from or not, but.
That's the one I'm speaking about. They, they require a sprinkler system.
So that's all I'm saying. It's hard to, to draw that firm final line. When you know that there's other things that are needs that are arising, so let's hear Asbury, and let's just not make a firm commitment right now. How about that? Continue to be where we are, which. Pardon?
We will schedule that for the seventh.
Okay. Sounds good.
Does anyone in, have an actual count of how many applicants we've awarded? Since we're on the discussion, we have two minutes of airtime.
I believe that it's fifty, including the. Cities administrative. Funds from that, as well as the couple of projects that are internal radio purchase. The Nathan's project, so fifty.
About fifty number, thank you.
But there will probably be some funds that don't get expended. You know, as we go through the contracts here, some projects may come in under budget, so we're going to have some money maybe left too, so.
Good point.
I'm hoping that we're going to have that budget position filled when we turn the page to the new. Ed, I see. Is that cheers or an agreement, salut? Because we really do need, now, now it turns another corner where we're tracking and making sure that, that, that we meet the budget numbers, so. I, I'm looking forward to making that announcement that we have, we have that superhero on, on team.
Time for one more question?
Go right ahead.
Hate to put Ed or others on the spot, but do we have a count on how many outstanding resolutions, so to speak, that we need to have? In front of the supervisors to approve?
We're about two-thirds of the way through the contractual things to bring forward to you on the swap projects. There's a couple of projects that are still going to be, at least right now, we envision as being American Rescue Plan.
The summer, they have ten to fifteen.
And yes, and right now I'm working to prepare for the seventh, all of the purchase of service projects, if you remember those, the, the, out of the. That six hundred thousand, so I'm working diligently on those. And then we also have some, we've been working internally in a small. Contractual relationship with the projects that you have awarded that we're going to take a picture of with the Tom Hancock. So there's those, we'll do those all in one swoop as well, and appreciate the hand gesture and. Historical societies, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Done.
It's five fifteen. Andy, you have anything further?
Just appreciation. There's a lot of moving pieces, and I do appreciate the help of all the folks that are tracking the details. Just appreciation. There's a lot of moving pieces and I do appreciate the help of all the folks that are tracking the details.
Ed has done a lot. Stella has done a lot. You guys are super. We'll move to our 515 work session and possible action on the SCM fiber lease with City of Dubuque. Nathan.
Nice to see you.
Hi, thank you.
And I see Mr. Lyons is there as well. Hello, sir.
Good evening supervisors. On your agenda tonight is a proposal to lease fiber from the City of Dubuque to take care of some of our Keystone locations, in this case Sunny Crest Manor. This conversation actually started November of 2019. I bring that up because this has been a collaborative and positive progress. It was not a knee jerk, not quick Band-Aid. This has been a process working with them to find a method and a solution that'll work for the county, that'll work for the city. And I am very happy with the final proposal. I it is, it will service our needs for decades and it will also work for the city. The seeds of this actually go all the way back to 2017. The handout I gave you is actually from my January 2017 budget proposal. And if you look at it, it says aspirational. This is the first step to take it from aspirational to reality. This will get us fiber from Sunny Crest Manor to the DLEC. And for all intents and purposes, that works for us because last year we installed lots of new modern fiber between Courthouse and DLEC. So it's the same same for us. This will set us up for when I do the math. I mean, you heard me talk a lot about fiber in county over the last two years and payback, and we certainly have had spirited discussions on what payback means. I'm always talking about 10 and 15, 20 year paybacks. The payback on this, if we were to do it ourselves, it's 99 years. So even me with wanting to own our own stuff, no, this is this is a good collaboration and partnership with the city. It will service their needs and our needs. And I go back to 2017. It's the first piece of getting an actual resilient network ring between West Campus, Sunny Crest and Courthouse, which those are the three Keystone locations of the county. I have no delusions that we're going to have a fiber ring at all of our locations. There are certain locations that we're going to have a good quality connection in and out, and that'll have to suffice. But our Keystone locations, we need to have on a network ring. And this is the first step to getting us there.
Are the costs budgeted and do we know the costs?
Yes, the costs are budgeted. There will be some capital costs to pay for the final distances to get into the buildings and things like that. But no, this is budgeted. It's 29,000 and change for five years. When you do the math, it's 5,900 a year going forward, which is a very good value for the county for us to do it ourselves. There's no math there. And for us to do it from the private sector, it it no, I mean, it'd be 25, 30K a year.
That's the 29,707 50.
Yeah.
The other costs you said.
There'll be reasonable minor costs to get it over the finish line, which would be one-time costs. Once it's done, we won't see those again. I it'll be a few thousand. I I don't know the full math until we get out there with surveyors to finish this, but our operating costs going forward would be approximately 29,000 for five years now, and we can renew that every five years until I mean, 50 years from now. I I I can't see out past 40, 50 years, but I can tell you that from a ROI payback standpoint, there's nothing even close that we can do.
Was there ever an option or a discussion related to owning a line versus leasing or renting from the city?
We've did that math and we spent the first year kind of going through that where we would lease conduit and then run our own fiber through that conduit. The payback on that is about 55, 60 years out, if you do the math, so closer. There's just no good way for us to do it and not have a tremendous outlay of cash. And the other piece of that is we don't need 120 pairs of fiber between here and Courthouse, which is, if you're running your own, you're not going to run one pair of fiber. This will give us six pair, which is sufficient for what we need that that will last us for the next.
I think the dollar amounts modest, but it is a lease and it's six grand a year and probably going up at some point, not five years is listed here. And I think you do list the pre next five year term and same same linear foot, which is good. But we are leasing this from the city. So it's very similar to payments we make to the federal building to the City of Dubuque as well. So it's a cost of doing business that's going from the county to the city.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm good with it. I appreciate it.
I would. So I assume this would could be used, American Rescue Funds could be used for this.
Absolutely.
Or for this contract.
It is budgeted in the normal budget, but if the board, when the bills come due and we got to pay this, if the board wishes to use ARPA, I would be thrilled because I have other things that I'm working on that I would like to that won't qualify for ARPA with the 55 fiber fund, but when we get to that point, I can certainly revisit with Stella and Ed if the board wishes to do that, but it would qualify. This certainly supports the public health.
It would be a good use for the ARPA funds. I mean, that qualifies for that very uniquely. So.
I I would be moving towards American Rescue Funds, you know, assuming the Budget Director would concur.
This would be put under the swap bucket of funds.
Thank you, Stella.
Yeah.
It's fine. I don't know how big that swap bucket is. Wasn't that swap bucket 10 million?
So the swap program became from our revenue loss, which was the $10 million revenue loss. The 611,000 that's left is all swap funds.
Oh, very good.
So sure. I mean, it would fit in the original requirements, but it sounds like we don't need to get clever.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
There is a possible action on this too with a resolution. If the board should choose to move forward, we can get this buttoned up and move forward.
Was it on the regular agenda or just down below on the work session?
It's on there, the resolution, whereas.
Second issue that Nathan has on the agenda tonight.
That's resolution, but it's only listed at the 515.
Two resolutions. Do you not have another second resolution?
I'm happy to speak on it. If you want to, I would speak during the normal process. I don't want to step out of turn. So yes, you're not rid of me yet.
What's the agenda?
We'll deal with the fiber lease first.
Yeah, the fiber lease is only listed at the 515 work session, right?
It's only just fiber lease with the City of Dubuque is the only thing that's a work session.
To answer your question, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's probably proper to address it now then.
And if the board does decide to use swap funds, we would bring back another resolution in addition, but this at least gets the progress moving forward.
I don't think there's a resolution. It doesn't state anything about funding sources, probably doesn't.
It does not.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented with the addendum or additional document where it's stating American Rescue Funds as the source for the funding.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution with the amendment to use 29,707 and 50 cents of ARP funds for the five-year lease. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious.
Thank you. Did the board want me to speak for five, six minutes on the next resolution or wait until that comes up?
That's on the work session here for the lease or the.
For the firewall.
Firewall. So.
I'm here. I'm not going anywhere. So I'll be here till the end of your meeting.
Technically, that's not to start till 5:30. Motion to recess till 5:30.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to recess till 5:30. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in recess till 5:30. Start the meeting with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do you have anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay, we'll move into our Tom Hancock Grant Awards presentation. We have Bernard Rescue Unit was awarded $34,225 and that's for hydraulic rescue tools. Then Trailia Piazza Fire, $21,231 for ALS training mannequin. Dubuque County EMS Association, $10,000 for an MCI trailer upgrade. Upward Fire Department, $15,000 automated CPR device. Key West Fire Department, $6,000 May Day event training. New Vienna Fire Department, $20,000 SCBA air filling system. Cheryl Fire Department, $9,855 for helmet and pulse ometry ometry update. Worthington Fire Department, $8,689 for thermal imaging and radio accessories. All the money is total 125,000 and that money is taken from the Tom Hancock Memorial Grant. Congratulations to all those fire departments. We have representatives from each chair.
Peter Hagenson with the Cheryl Fire Department and also President of the Dubuque County Firefighters Association. Just want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the rest of the committee for the opportunity to have this granted greatly helps our emergency services.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Want to do photos, Tom?
We do have a big checks for everybody to take with them. So.
Harley, if I may, I'd just like to thank the committee that worked on it. There, you know, yourself and and the others that that worked in getting the grants in and then all the departments for applying for it. It's a huge grant and it's kind of a milestone. This is the fourth year you've awarded these. So we're at the $500,000 mark. So thank you very much. And on behalf of all the emergency services organizations, you know, we're all doing fundraisers and looking for grants to be able to provide the service. So this is quite a shot in the arm for us. So thank you.
Exciting. I would I would just say that so I've been on, I'm just finishing my first term, obviously four years. So it's exciting to have been part of this, but I would give public kudos to Supervisor Wickham, who brought this forward four years ago and the board at that time adopted this. And I think it was primarily your focus, Jay, in the drafting of this. So I appreciate that very much. And then with Harley joining us, it's been something we budgeted every year and I I just thank you because otherwise we we may not have had that where we are today. So it's very exciting.
I appreciate appreciate those 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 comments. The funding component of this and the organization is easy because of all the people behind it. So when you go and as elected officials, politicians, we go to various functions, breakfast, casino nights, so to speak, over the years. And you just see the people behind it. And then obviously you generally don't want to see them on call at your door. But we know what happens. We we know from, you know, the items in the newspaper that the people that are volunteering are putting their life at risk to to help the community. And so on behalf of Dubuque County, we we appreciate all the time and effort that everyone across the county puts in volunteering for fire and EMS in Dubuque County.
Thank you.
Do individual photos or one great big group photo with everyone holding a check?
How do you want to do it, Ed?
Let's do it at these.
I think we're all fine.
Bernard.
Battle, right?
Apparently it wasn't Bernard. Really a piasta. He's, he's Tony EMS.
Such as chairs.
Upwards.
He's gonna take upwards.
Key West.
Peter will take it.
New Vienna. Cheryl Pete. And Worthington.
Hey, thanks for you, Don. Appreciate it. Thanks for serving. Thank you. Mr. President. Rotate over here or is he?
One year.
Meeting.
One more meeting.
Thanks, Harold.
Dan, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hold, hold the checks up, man. Sure. Fun to do. Stage it in or what? Here we go. Supervisor. I think we're good.
Hey, Jay, I really thank you.
Oh, geez, you want to pick Key West?
Yeah, it was good. That was all day. Researching and thinking about the idea. And that day, I mean, Google Tom, it was his birthday. Like why I got it now.
It's very worthwhile cause. Very worthwhile. Okay, we'll move along to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October seventeenth.
Move approval?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of the meeting of October seventeenth. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we go to consent items. We have a class LC liquor license for Berkey's Bar and Grill and a class LC liquor license for Roadies Double J LLC.
Make a motion to approve both consent items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the class LC liquor license for Berkey's Bar and Grill and class LC liquor license for Roadies. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Actually go to proof of publication. That for the November seventeenth?
We need to do the notice of public hearing.
Correct. There is no proof of publication. There's no procurement procedures.
So we should just move past that?
Right.
So we have the.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing for amendments to the zoning ordinance.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the notice of public hearing for November fourteenth at nine AM. Favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We have no Platts for approval. They have action items, resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to authorize a chair to sign firewall agreement with Taurus Technologies. Nathan is here if need some more input on that. Nathan?
Good evening again. So the firewall was installed in early two thousand eighteen. It is one of the three, what I would call the most important security devices in this county. Our users being one, the endpoint technology being the second and the third being the firewall in no order because every threat depends on where it's trying to come in at. This device should be able to get ten years of life out of, which in my world is actually really good. We've coming up on the end of our fifth year. This, if we do the five year on this, this will allow us to just take a breath for next three, three and a half years and then year four. I can design and spec and figure out what's going to replace it. So by the end of close the end of year nine, we can have something to actually replace the physical hardware. This is licensing and essentially three times a day, this thing phones home to the mothership and downloads updates, new threats. I, I, I'm not making it up. That's literally what it does. And as a result of that, we are able to protect this county's network at a level that a lot of other entities are not able to. There's significant value in this device. This is budgeted. I have a grant that will be able to pay for some of it. And then I have from this past approval to pay for the rest of it. I did only get one bid for this. I'm very confident in Taurus. They are the ones that sold it to us. They would have the lowest price, no matter what, because they own the registration, so to speak of it. So I'm not concerned. This is actually a little cheaper than what I thought it would be. And as a weird side note, I did actually have a company reach out to me asking for more details on the bid. And the stuff they were asking me for, you don't need to bid on it. So really, it's just kind of an FYI that even I'm being probed and fished. I'm not clear. I talked to our rep. What could they do with the information had I given it to him? And essentially he said they could have stolen the license keys. Had I replied, and I started to reply and then I hesitated because why? So just slight side note there, as elections are coming and as I said, our users are one of our frontline against threats. That includes IT as well.
Well, the technology firewall is extremely important. I'm aware that heard horror stories of ransoms and everything else. It is rather expensive. Hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight seventy-three for five years.
Yes.
Boris is an Iowa company.
Yes.
Iowa based company. I saw that as well. So plus in my, in my book.
Yeah, they are a small, small shop.
I know they're, they're vending these products and representing them.
Yeah.
So they're not the original equipment manufacturer, but.
No, no, no.
I, I understand that, but I'm glad they're here and.
They are an Iowa company.
Iowa company.
So we have been leasing from them. This is just extending it.
Yes. Yeah, this is renewing it, which in the grand scheme of things is actually way simpler and it had we had three or four bids and somebody somehow took a loss, it would have gotten complicated. So I'm thrilled. I have them. They are a wonderful partner to the county. They were a wonderful partner to my previous employer. They are good people to know and have on your side.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Taurus Technologies for one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollar for the firewall license licensing contract for five years. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Nathan.
Next, we go to communications. There's non appointments, open vacancies for information only.
And we will be bringing either the first or second meeting in November, we will be bringing the rest of the appointments for that quarter to the Board of Supervisors. So you have that heads up. We did take care of the Board of Health a few weeks ago. So we'll bring the rest up to you.
We have, there are many appointments that will expire at the end of December. So I'm just wondering about how this time will be. And I know there are two for certain on the Board of Health. There are folks that we've, they've never completed a full term. So I don't know how much discussion there will be, but certainly whether there's interest. How will we handle that? I understand we have a quarterly deadline running where we want to appoint people, but we, we need to do something in probably very first of January to make other appointments.
Yeah, we've had, we've started that conversation in our office to see how it would work and what the best idea would be.
We should be probably doing it the first week of December.
Except for we have the, except for the window, except for the window for application technically would go to the end of the quarter. We could change that window and put a, put a blast out there, but I would hate for a qualified candidate to apply for one of those spots and come in in the middle of December after we have already appointed as well.
Priority for me would be to make sure that the health department is full as soon as possible.
And they meet the second or third Wednesday of each month.
Sure, but when do we, I mean, that's the one that has probably significant interest in the community. But also they do not yet have an executive director. They're going to be beginning strategic planning. I don't want that board to just be lingering. We'll want to make some firm decisions.
I mean, that board would be filled either the first or second meeting in January and that would still fall before when they have their first meeting for January. So the board would experience no lapse in, in membership from December to January. They have a full roster up till the end of the year. And that would allow the timeframes to stay in place and.
One of the positions is the person who chairs the board. So there'd be no action, no it is, it is going to be a problem in the health department.
Well, regardless of when we appoint or when we put it on there, having the chair change is going to cause that one month delay on everything to begin with. Even if we appoint in Jan, in December, that chair would not take effect until January. And if they didn't want to have any business move forward from one meeting to the other, then that's going to give a month delay for the new chair to become acclimated.
I think it would be better to, if their term expires December thirty-first, that they know ahead of time whether they continue on or if somebody else is being appointed to that board that they can.
I have no, yeah, we have no problem putting it on. We can put it on the last meeting of the year, which will be for nineteenth.
Try to do that and back up your dates. That'd be my suggestion. Back the dates up to make sure that we get those appointments made so that there's a continuous appointment if possible.
That's, yeah.
Had this type of discussion, this little, you know, blip multiple times. And so the board changed it to quarterly. And I think if these are important, my comments still withstand is why don't we review them and appoint them monthly then? And so you have more chances to, to appoint people to boards, keep boards filled, make changes. So we used to never have any dates and that was kind of just up in the air. And then the or supervisors chose quarterly. And so, you know, we keep amending that. My suggestion back then was to do it monthly. And I think.
Well, we could. Inspire.
We could maintain.
End of the year or June thirtieth. That's really the only times that they're expiring.
Vacancies.
We could maintain the quarterly rule if we just forego and wait till December to make the appointments for this current quarter. That would still put us at one time if if that's palatable. That's a little bit easier for our office to manage when we have four meetings a year that we know we're going to have this prepared as opposed to twelve.
It has been successful in making it other than monthly or who's ever next. Because that's how we've done it sometimes too is oh, there's an appointment. Oh, there's a vacancy. There's an application done. So by holding it a bit in letting that the press release go out, I do think it adds for some transparency. It lets people know that there's opportunity and that there's a time bring people to the boards and commissions. It is just, I think, a causation in part of the pandemic that we've had lots of changes. If there may very well be a change in the next year, Supervisor Wickham says that it'll go back to monthly, but I don't want to start a new hard policy. I'd just like to get the boards and commissions rolled over for December into January.
I'm open to your recommendations. Or the auditor who's doing the work.
We'll have it on before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have a motion to approve personnel requisition for permanent full-time clerk four for the county attorney. Hiring ment.
So it's unusual that we would be asking to bring a new employee in to have overlap. They're asking that, that, that this job would begin on December fifth. And they, so there'd be probably what? One week of training of two people doing the same job.
County Attorney, County Attorney May is on the Zoom call. This is not out of the ordinary to have overlap. If I had, if we had had an employee want to start earlier, we would, I would have had recommended overlap as well for positions in our office too.
Training purposes to make things transition smooth. That's actually.
It is, I guess I would say to the auditor in my four years, it is unusual. It isn't that it's not appropriate, but we do not usually bring on people to do jobs that people are currently doing. We just try to, i- in this case, it's a little unusual because of the numbers of changes that have happened. So I don't have a problem with this. I just think it's not, it's not exactly the same as how other people come on when openings occur. So not good or bad, just point of information. A motion to approve the personnel requisition for the part-time, part, excuse me, full-time clerk for, for county attorney.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the permanent full-time clerk four for the county attorney's office. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for permanent full-time engineering tech two option. The road department to replace Russ Weber. There's actually two personnel requisitions attached to this one position. One is for an engineer and one is for the engineering tech two in the event that he cannot find a engineer to hire.
Are we going to have a problem that it's not labeled that way on the agenda?
You're not.
Follow up for the work session last week.
Correct. Yeah, there should be no, I, I think all the questions and concerns were addressed by.
We had already approved for the engineer.
And this is the formality that we take as far as performing a personnel requisition.
To authorize both positions?
No, just for the engineering tech two. I believe the engineer position was already.
Okay, gotcha.
Correct.
Let's go back out on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time engineering tech two option.
Second. Yes, I did second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the engineering tech two position for the road apartment. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. That's all we have on the agenda. We have public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium. State your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries. And I will quote prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Dale?
Dale Lustline seventeen two nine one Asbury Road. Today I'm here to talk about a serious situation that has gone on in Dubuque County for quite some time. And it's because the executive director of the Dubuque County Conservation, Brian Preston refuses to do his job. And I'm asking that the board terminate him immediately. Mr. Preston has allowed the MGV Corporation to use, abuse Dubuque County Conservation property for many years. They are holding some very. Debut County Conservation property for many years. They are holding some very dangerous events on this property with no liability coverage protecting Debut County. Mr. Preston has known about this for many years and continues to look the other way. He has a liability that we cannot continue. Mr. Wickham does know many of the details about what I'm talking about. I do have fifteen minutes of drone coverage of the recent stunt that was pulled that Mr. Preston thinks is no big deal. This cannot continue. Anyhow, we cannot let Brian Preston set a precedent that anybody can go in and destroy Debut County Conservation property for their own personal benefit and financial gain. Anyhow, this is wrong, and I'm asking that the board take immediate action anyhow, because this is liability that we cannot continue. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board? If anyone on Zoom wishing to address the board?
We do not.
Motion to adjourn?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.